Silence and then Mr. Lesby will lead us in the place.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. McEwen?
Here.
Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sane? Mr. Showalter? Mr. Singer?
Here.
Mrs. Sackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Okay, the next item of business is approval of the minutes of our tenth meeting. Motion for approval?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Showalter, hands that you did receive your check registered this time. Thank you. Public comments? Four minutes. Sister? Come to the toting, please.
I'm Sister Mary Jemaien. I have no money, no authority, no anything. I'm just going to say I want you to know. First of all, I would still know if you could...
Chief? Yeah, turn that for her.
No, not?
Oh, man, yes, I hope you won't turn around when they can see it.
Oh, sure.
And the camera's right, right.
There you go, that's better.
Um, I, well, I did find out a little bit about your... No. First of all, it's been rented by Susan Heskey. But point is, I don't know that, I didn't know that. And I would like more information on it. And I'd like to know the operating expenses of our building. Maybe by month or something like that. Because I've been asked by a priest to find out before they get involved. He says he has to be very careful. But I don't have to be. So, in order to advance a basis. You all have any questions?
The property is, the property is, is being leased.
Yes, for twenty-five years.
And, uh, I'm assuming if, if, to get all the information you're asking for, you would need to file an open records request with them. I don't know that we would handle that.
Well, we don't, we don't pay anything on the expenses out there.
No.
Right. That's their whole, you know, ballgame.
I guess one question I would have, was it, was it a continuous twenty-five year lease or were there options out to twenty-five?
Options two, year two, year five, and year ten. That, uh, they can opt out of, of the lease.
Is there the, uh, do they, do they submit any financial statements to the, to the city at all regarding, is there any reporting at all?
Not to my knowledge. Did you get anything, Stacy?
No, I'm not sure.
I don't think so, I haven't seen any. Haven't seen any paperwork at all.
Andrew, I don't guess you've had a chance to look at the lease, have you? I mean, that's, that's probably what we would need to do is for, I'm guessing, for our attorney to probably review the lease, see if there is a clause.
And I had, I was gonna ask Arlene to get in touch with you and, and set up a time for you all to come in and sit down and we could, we could discuss this. We'll try to get as much information for you as possible.
Yes, we'll cooperate in the way we can.
Well, thank you. Uh, this one priest that I think our heart had hoped, you know, would cooperate with me. He said he wouldn't mind sitting down with a small group of people, but he didn't want all of this. I said, I would pick all of this, you know, if we can get a small group together.
All you need to do is, is call the office and make an appointment and we'll be glad to meet with you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, down to my section. I have a proclamation. He's running late. Okay. That's all I had for, for my section, would be all right to counsel once Mr. Height can get here.
Sure.
We will back up and recognize him. Okay, municipal order approving no parking on Lemons Mill Road. Mr. Engineer?
Can you be mayor, counsel? I received a, um, a call from a lady who lives over on Old Lemons Mill Road. She had concerns about people parking on the street there. The street width is sixteen feet wide, it's a two-way street. There's not enough room to allow parking, so I'm requesting, um, your approval to put up signs.
The lady, I'll just let you all know, the lady called me as well, the other concern she has too, besides all of that, is the buses from Georgetown Middle go that way and turn up Louis B. None Drive now. So, there's a lot of traffic there and if the cars are parked on either side, it makes it difficult as well. So, I make a motion.
Second? Pointed each other, either one, it doesn't make any difference.
Okay.
Any, any further discussion on this?
Have you talked to the other neighbors on the street?
No. It's sixteen feet wide and two-way traffic, so not much you can do about, about that.
Is it gonna be enforced as far as cars actually? There's a lot of spa, there are a lot of spaces on that street where, um, it's, the cars are parked, not in the yards, but in like a gravel kind of situation where the owners have put some gravel in front of the house and they park kind of parallel to the street. Or is that gonna be illegal or is it just gonna be actual cars?
No, that'll be, they're parking on their property.
Parking on their property, okay.
As long as they're not parked in the street.
As long as they're not actually parked on the pavement.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Stacy, you're up next. Finance. First reading of bond ordinance sponsored by Mr. Lesby and Ms. Sackett.
As Joe and I mentioned last time, we're here for the first reading of the bond ordinance to authorize Ross Sinclair to go out and get bids for a bond issue. We'll let Tracy read the summary and then Joe Lukovka from Ross Sinclair and Ian Koffler from Pec Shaffer, our bond counsel, are here for any questions if you have them.
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, whereas the annual budget adopted by the city council on July 2nd...
The bond ordinance?
I think you started with the budget ordinance instead of the bond ordinance.
July 2nd?
Thanks for stopping me.
Okay. You know, wasn't even me, but...
Do you want mine, Stacy? You have, I mean, who are you? I forgot, obviously, since I can't read the right thing.
Did we need to read the municipal order for Old Lemons Mill?
I mean, not unless you really want me to.
I mean, I do love to hear your voice, but I just wanted to make sure that...
This is getting, this is getting interesting.
An ordinance of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, series 2014, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed five million dollars for the purpose of financing the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of a new police station. Approving the form of bonds, authorizing designated officers should execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating a bond payment fund, maintaining the heretofore established sinking fund, authorizing the acceptance of the bid of the bond purchaser for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances. This ordinance, the ordinance, sets forth general rules, regulations, and conditions for the issuance of general obligation bonds by the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, the city. An aggregate, the principal amount not to exceed five million dollars, the bonds, subject to decrease by the city in such amount as is necessary or desirable for the purpose of financing the cost of the project and paying the cost of issuing of the bonds. Provisions are made for the authorization and issuance of the bonds, for the application of the proceeds of the bonds, for the establishment of a bond payment fund, for the maintenance of a sinking fund, and for certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds. The bonds are to be sold at public competitive sale in accordance with the provision of KRS Chapter 424. The bonds pledge the full faith and credit of the city and provision is made for the collection of a tax to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds, subject to certain credits, as provided in Section 7 of the ordinance. As required by KRS 83A 060, the following Section 7 of the ordinance is set forth in its entirety. Section 7, general obligation. The bond shall be full general obligation of the city and for the payment of said bonds and the interest therein, the full faith, credit, and revenue of the city are hereby pledged for the prompt payment thereof. During the period, the bonds are outstanding, there shall be, and there hereby is levied on all the taxable property in the city. In addition to all other taxes without limitation as to rate, a direct tax annually in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds, when and as due is being hereby found and determined that current tax rates are within all applicable limitations. Said tax shall be and is hereby ordered, computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate and collected by the same officers in the same manner, and at the same time, the taxes for general purposes for each of said years are certified, extended, and collected. Said tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof, provided however that in each year to the extent and the other lawfully available funds of the city are available for the payment of the bonds and are appropriated for such purpose. The amount of such direct tax upon all of the taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such other funds so available and appropriated. A copy of the ordinance and of the form of the documents in connection with the issuance of the bonds are on file in the office of the City Clerk, 100 Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324.
First reading.
Any questions?
Why on the bond doc, on the ordinance, just to say, uh, the amount not to exceed five million, why doesn't it say four point five or closer to the amount of the police station?
We just wanted to make sure everything was covered. Of course, we can come back to counsel and, uh, obviously, once we get the bids, but we just wanted to make sure everything was covered. We are anticipating just the construction and contingency and paying for anything else with cash, but wanted to have that ceiling. We are waiting on, obviously, the cost estimate back from our construction manager. So, we just wanted to allow for any possible contingencies, but...
When do you, when do you expect that to come back?
Friday? Okay, he's been in for Friday.
So, if we know on Friday, do we need it to save five million?
That, that's a really good question. The bonds are gonna be sold at an advertised competitive sale, so basically, the city's gonna get the best rate based on whatever the bond markets are doing on that given day. And the reason why we leave the five million in there is to give flexibility to Ross Sinclair, the city's financial agent, fiscal agent, to, uh, to put that bid out there. Sometimes underwriters will bid a higher par amount of the bonds, but give you guys an artificially low interest rate. And it's, you'll, you'll award the sale based on the lowest true interest cost of the city. That's a pretty technical financial thing, but, um, we're, we're just building in the flexibility to make sure you guys can accommodate that kind of a bid and we'll reduce the amount of the bonds by as much as is possible, you know, in order to cover the cost of the project and the cost of issuing the debt.
Explain that again. I didn't quite catch the reason why it needed to be an extra half million dollars.
It's a really good, yeah.
Keep in mind that, uh, you will be approving the contract.
Right.
Right. And you've already have a contract for the cost of issuance with engagement of bond counsel and advisor. So, once we have the contract that you approve and then we add the cost of issuance, that will be the par amount. This just allows us so we don't have to come back in the event that the contract comes in at a higher amount to come back and get another ordinance rep. So, the, the amount that you borrow will not be any more than you've already, will approve with the contract.
Okay.
So, if you don't approve the contract, then we can't do the borrowing, so you have control over the amount.
It's always dangerous to let a municipality of any size or anyone have more money than what's absolutely necessary, so that makes me a little leery that it's, that it's half million over what we're expecting it to be.
But we still have the final call when we approve the contract.
We'll be bringing the bids to you from Codell.
And that's, and that's when we'll make the final decision on...
You know, that cost plus the contingency and, uh, you said cost of financing, and that's what we will issue that for.
Essentially, the closing cost, I think, is what you were saying.
Right, and, and, and the way that the bids are presented by the underwriters, certain underwriters will want to show a higher coupon rate on the bonds, so they may buy your bonds and the interest may, interest rate may be five percent, but they'll artificially lower the principal amount this far to accommodate that, and you end up in the same place based on the true interest cost, which is a calculation that the financial advisor provides for the city. So, you guys are borrowing the money at the lowest possible cost. It's a pretty technical thing there, um, and it has to do with the way that the bonds are sold under state law, required to be sold at that advertised competitive sale.
And I will also say, I know I was speaking with Joe, 'cause I know he and I were the ones that discussed, came up with that, was currently the estimate that came from the architect was four point two, with the ten percent contingency, put it up to four point four and two.
Okay.
Plus the cost of financing was putting it right on that borderline of four point five, so we just went up the next heck of a...
Ten percent adjustment.
So, you know, I mean, that was all why, I mean, it was right on that borderline of four point five, so I didn't want to issue four point five and then they come in at four point five five percent.
Half million dollars is sufficient.
It is, but, I mean, we won't issue anything more than necessary.
What kind of rates are you seeing right now on similar?
We're still seeing, we had, uh, since our last reading, about eight bond sales that, that, that we've been financializing on, and of course, there's been about four or five others that other firms have worked on, but we're still looking on that fifteen year time period, somewhere around a three seventy-five, three point seven five, three and a half, three seventy-five. Locked in, fixed, around that range.
Okay, thanks, guys. That was the first reading, we'll get all the information in, but the time we have our second reading.
That'd be Monday?
Yes.
Our scheduled for meeting next Monday. Okay, first reading of budget amendment, also sponsored by Mr. Lesby and Ms. Sackett.
And, uh, just wanted to, of course, mention, um, a few things here, of course, I sent you all a memo. Obviously, we're bringing in the five thousand dollar KLC grant that was received, uh, by the fire department. That kind of what, that is what triggered me, to have to do a budget amendment, 'cause we're bringing new revenue into the budget. And then the other items additions, um, the IT in a box contract has, I think, been approved, uh, by the parties necessary, Parks and Rec, B&amp;Z, uh, the fiscal court. I know Andrew went to a couple of meetings for that, and, uh, so it's bringing in our portion of those. Um, and then, as you all know, I believe it had been brought up, the EMA tower would need to be replaced, so we've brought in air half of that. And then, as noted, Public Works had said that, uh, due to the harshness of the winter, they needed an increase in expendable supplies due to the amount of salt they've had to buy. And they don't use that account just for salt, so they've obviously used almost like ninety-nine percent of that account because of all the salt. They requested that increase.
You said that the county has bought into the IT in a box, the, the big package or the smaller package for building inspection and electrical inspection?
Everything. Eighty, eighty users.
That's awesome.
They approved it on Friday.
Okay.
They approved a one-year, one-year contract.
And this is just enough to get us through the, the three months that are, we're anticipating, uh, provided the second reading of this budget amendment's passed next Monday, anticipating the contract start of April 1st for the new contract. So, this is budgets for that three months that's left in this fiscal year.
Did they get us down, I remember we, I can't remember the numbers, but I think it was for IT in a box, it was something like, it's gonna be ninety-three thousand a year or eighty-three thousand?
So, it's like eleven-five per month. Comes out to like...
I feel like this portion was around eighty, is, I didn't, I should've brought that spreadsheet with me that we did.
Almost nine thousand.
Huh?
Yeah, the city's, the city's portion, yeah.
Yeah, so we got it down to nine thousand like we were, we were planning, about ninety-two-hundred, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fantastic, that's great.
And we had actually budgeted, um, for a twelve-month contract back in December, even though there weren't twelve months left in the fiscal year, which is why we don't have to add anything for our portion this fiscal year.
Yeah.
We had, we had added twelve months, even though there weren't twelve months.
I think the best, I think we were planning on our high side to be ninety-two hundred, but if we were at around nine thousand, that's great, that's fantastic.
Tracy's ready to read.
The right ordinance?
Yeah.
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, whereas the annual budget adopted by the city council on July 2, 2013, and amended on February 24, 2014, needs to be amended. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Summary, ordinance fourteen dash zero zero three is amended as follows. General fund, intergovernmental city building inspection revenues are increased by eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Public works expenditures are increased by thirty-three thousand dollars. Building inspection expenditures are increased by one thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. Community services expenditures are increased by seventy thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Grant fund revenues are increased by five thousand dollars. Fire department expenditures are increased by five thousand dollars. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324. Publicly introduced and referred for the first time March 7, 2014, 17th, 2014.
Okay, first read? Madam Human Resources? Freshly back from Atlanta?
Sorry, I couldn't bring a win home there.
Yes?
Um, in 2013, obviously, we had some lengthy discussions about whether or not the city clerk's position would be elected versus appointed, and the council chose to keep this position as an elected one, but in those meetings, council had also indicated interest in changing the salary of the position. So, the same research that I had done then, I've brought back to you in your packet. We have some extra information in that the 2014 Kentucky League of Cities Wage Survey results are now in hand, and from all of that, I've given you the recommendation of where I would set the salary for the position, just based upon, um, the market and cities our size. So, um, with Councilman Penn's sponsorship, I have an ordinance before you that would change the annualized salary of the position from forty-three thousand approximately to fifty-seven thousand approximately.
Discussion?
Uh, the position description?
Uh huh.
You, you, now, is that binding under the ordinance?
No, um, I believe from what I've read, and Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, by, um, ordinance, we could establish these duties of a city clerk above and beyond what the statute implies, but we have not done that. Here it is for you, if you would ever like to. Um, I'd be happy to take the steps to make that happen, but it has not as of yet.
I don't know, can we make it on the minimum, minimum qualifications and requirements? Where you specify the training and experience on an elected position or one that's specified by statute, but especially an elected position?
I don't believe we can change the qualifications of a, of an elected office.
An elected office.
I don't believe we're permitted to do that.
So, these are just...
This is just a guide that pretty much summarizes what we were hoping for it to be if the position were changed to appointed versus elected.
So, all of this is just suggested?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Is it, is it suggested because we're still thinking in the future, that may come back to council and want to change it to an appointed position?
I don't know, we haven't talked any further about it in regards to bringing that to council again. I assume if a member of council were to say they're interested in those discussions again by all means, but we haven't had that discussion internally.
Essentially, what we're doing is memorializing what's taking place today with this.
This, this is a job description that fits Tracy and what she's doing right now.
Including, including the things that have expanded over the last year and a half, two years.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Taking on ABC administration, taking some duties from the city's finance department, just all sorts of random duties that she has picked up along the way as other departments have become overwhelmed.
ABC was added as an, as a, as an ordinance, so that is already on the books. ABC Administrator.
And bear in mind that we have no one on our staff that could take on this extra ABC duty, uh, now, other than Tracy, and I'm, I'm so glad that she stepped up, uh, to take that. Other than that, in order to administer this program, we would've had to take on another staff member. So, we're in a good situation in that we were able to collaborate the two together.
Well, and it's, in a lot of ways, the calls made to other cities are what seem to reveal the most. Obviously, with the KLC wage survey, we can see that those cities, there are only two our size who reported a wage for a person who does the city clerk and treasurer duties, which is what Tracy does. The midpoint for that range was fifty-nine, two-ten. In the other twelve cities our size, they reported only as a city clerk with no treasurer responsibilities, and the midpoint for that was still fifty-five, eight, thirty-four. So, the KLC wage survey, which we use regularly to recommend salaries for our police department, our dispatch, um, fire department, it is indicating that we are not paying this position what it is worth, if we wanna, if we wanna say that.
I think the KLC wage survey is, is primarily that with additional information that we secured when we were talking about our police department, KLC survey is actually what we started with to develop, um, a solution for losing our officers like Tracy.
Right, right, and we even went a little higher than what the minimum of the KLC wage survey showed us then, so I, this, it's the best representation of what the cities most like us are doing. And I realize we're not in a, a private setting where, you know, your talent jumps and leaves because of recruiters constantly chasing after them, but, um, I do feel like this is a, a group that would want to feel like we are compensating our employees in a manner that other cities are following. I would hate to think that we would want to keep ourselves on the low end of everything when we compare ourselves to cities our size.
You know, it's a little bit different, though, this comparison, because this is still, we're unique, that the council chose not to make an appointed, so we're still an elected position, it's not an appointed position, or an appointed position, so it's not truly set as an employee, which I will say, when I saw the, um, job description there, it kind of disturbed me with the job description in behind this information, uh, which made me wonder if that was ultimately another end game to try to get this position to be appointed. But it's not a appointed position, I think the salary increase, that jump, is way too much, uh, to do that. A few thousand dollars, and you called me on that and I told you that, a few thousand dollars, 'cause this job with the, I think the city passed an ordinance that will allow that, uh, cost of living increase. So, over the last few years, it's been about an average of a thousand dollars increase. So, I don't think it's that far off, because if it was, you'd have no one running for the position, and currently, you have two people running for the position, knowing what the salary is currently, knowing that there's benefits attached to it, that type of thing. So, I think the jump in that is a little bit ridiculous, and how are you gonna justify a couple of weeks ago, come back with the IT person that wanted a, talking about having a huge raise there, and then now we're talking about this being a substantial increase in a raise? So, what about the police officers? What about the firemen? What are we gonna do with them? How can you keep justifying all these large raises coming out of administration, um, with what can we do for the rest of the employees? So...
At least my philosophy behind that was, if we're going to use this wage survey to establish how we pay our police officers and our firefighters, why wouldn't we use it when it comes to the matter of an individual position? It just seems like, you know, if we want to use it as our tool and our guide, then we should use it in all positions, not just a few. So, that's why the KLC data is what I, I rest with very well, because they're the organization that does the most digging into municipalities exclusively.
But it's, we're unique, because it's an elected position. I don't know, and I've never done a survey for how the city council get paid, don't care. I'm thankful for what we get, I'm thankful that we have the opportunity for benefits, but, you know, so I haven't gone out to do what other cities do, but we are unique in the fact that this is where we're, this is how we're set up, this is how we still chose to be set up, and it's an elected position, two people are running for the position, and they know what they're getting into, they know how much it's going to be as they're running now. So, they have the right to do it or not to do it. Now, on the flip side of it, what you said about private industry, if we had no one running for the position, then I think, yeah, we've got a problem, and we'd have to change things and have to go think about maybe an increase or something like that. But we're not at that position to have to do that, so...
Go ahead, Kelly.
I think we're, I think we're absolutely a success story, uh, based, based on what we did with the police department, you know, we didn't, one of the things that we, we took the KLC study regarding the police department and, and we didn't want to make, we didn't, you know, out of whatever, thirty-three or four police departments, uh, roughly our size across the state, we were, uh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth. And one of the things we talked about is that we didn't want to ma, we didn't want to try to tra, try to make our police department somewhere in the top five or even the top ten, we wanted to move that somewhere, uh, mid-range so that it was equitable, and, and that's something that we did successfully based on the KLC study. And, and that's something that we did successfully based on the KLC study, and we've seen that, you know, our officers, our new officers are staying, we've even recruited new officers from other places that, that have decided to come here because of that change. And I think that, that shows that we're doing, based on research, you know, and, and I'm coming from this, from, from an education standpoint, and we're constantly talking about research-based theories and research-based statistics, and, and KLC provides it for us. So I think this is another case where we could make that based on what others are like, whether or not it's appointed or whether it's elected, you know, you know, my opinion was that it should be appointed, but council was not in agreement with that. But at the same time, I think, you know, there are, there are a couple of people running, running for that based on what it currently pays and what the benefits package is, but at the same time, the KLC, the KLC research and statistics show that we could easily be paying someone more, and in addition to the statutory obligations of an elected City Clerk position, we've added additional responsibility. So I think it's easy for us to justify and make the decision that we can make this change and make the salary jump for our City Clerk, whether or not it continues as, as elected or appointed. So it, in my mind, it seems to make sense, and we've had a success story in the last year and a half with the police department, that that, 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 those statistics prove true, and we've had success in, in, in lowering the attrition of the officers leaving from the police department, so.
But the two, the two are still, I understand, I mean, I think that's a good thing for the police department, but I still think it's kind of apples and oranges by the way the, the city sets up and does what we do. And I don't know if other cities had deputy clerks, you know, we're, we're fortunate that we're able to have a deputy clerk to help offset some of the duties of the clerk and, and do that as well, because that person is in that, that office. So got that person to consider too, but I just don't see how you can justify every, it's like every couple of weeks we come back and there's a, there's a raise, it's like 25% increase in a raise. Nobody else in the city is going to get a 25% increase raise coming along, so how do you justify it to everybody else?
Well, and with the IT position, just to, to make sure it's clarified, with that position making the overtime it's making right now and the amount she's working, she's going to end up making that much money anyway. That was why we were bringing that to you.
I understand that, but I don't think bringing that to give her a raise was going to cut off her overtime in the way it was, was done, so, but that's that, this is this. I just don't see this being beneficial to the citizens of the community, I don't see how it's going to get you better candidates, I don't see how it's going to change what we're able to do currently.
I would agree, I think it is apples and oranges, but I don't, but because they're different, that means we don't have to justify it to every other city employee. Then this is, this is the case for this office, that was the case for police department, that was the case for IT, it's not, it's not an across-the-board decision. I guess the reason, oh, I'm sorry Brad.
You know, when we made the adjustment to the police department, the adjustment that we made in that department was not across-the-board either. And the case was made, and I think accepted throughout the city, that the reason we made that adjustment was because we continued to lose officers. And like Kelly said, I think that was a success. I, you know, whether we elect that position, or whether we appoint that position, I don't think either way should dictate us making sure that that position is paid a competitive wage for the job that, that she has. You know, as I look down this list, we've got independents that carries the City Clerk, Treasurer, ABC Administration, as well as one other duty, and their range for that position is 45 to 77,000 dollars. I, you know, I'm satisfied with the research between KLC and the additional research that Megan has done, and that's why I sponsored this at this level. I think that the, that the $57,000 is a competitive wage, I think it's, it's justifiable in the marketplace. I understand it's a significant raise for that position, but I also think we went several years with, with essentially no raise in that position. That combined with the added duties that, that the office has taken on, you know, I, I think that's, I think that is a, that's an acceptable wage for that particular job and, and that particular office. I, I don't think that we can, I don't think that we can use elected versus appointed to determine the salary, I think we should use the market and what the market will bear for the job that's done. And I think that that's, that, that the information that's been given us satisfies that.
I think the main finding we found on the police, as far as the police adjustment, was that we made a finding that we were losing officers. We weren't competitive financially in the marketplace. We made a finding that that seemed to be the predominant cause of some of the attrition we saw with, with officers, especially those that came here, were trained, and then left after a few years. I think that's the reason, that was the rationale that I accepted. Wasn't an issue of fairness, it was an issue of trying to compete with the market. So I don't know if that's really a good example to use in this case.
Yeah, I'm going to do my best to bring you the objective evidence and let you make your decisions from there.
Absolutely.
It, it wouldn't be fair for me to just subjectively decide, this seems like a, a good rate for her and put it to you.
Absolutely.
That's why I'm doing the background research to give you the number. And it may have some shock value with it, I understand that, I really do, because it is a large increase that most people don't see in one year's time. But, you know, I think I've provided you the objective evidence behind it, as I did and will with IT and any other position we need to do this for. I'll just bring you the facts, and then obviously the decision is yours.
Absolutely, I mean, you provided the wage survey, you did the research thereof, and also you did the research thereof on the police adjustment. But we also had further evidence and further testimony from the police chief at the time, from rank-and-file officers, also the FOP, to actually show us anecdotes and statistical evidence showing we were losing officers because of the pay rate, because we weren't paying a competitive wage. Right now what we have is this wage review and really not much else.
And what currently is the mayor's position making?
Mayor's position, 66, I think?
I'm sorry?
Your current salary? I think it's right around 66.
66, I think, 65.
Well, and that's, all due respect to the mayor's position, the mayor's office, since being there, that 57 and 66, the mayor takes on a whole lot more responsibility than, as an elected official takes on a whole lot more responsibility than the clerk does. And that's not much difference between an elected clerk's salary and the mayor, and the mayor's.
You recommending a raise?
To you, no. Not to you.
I'm receptive.
No, 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 not to you. Not to you. I'm not recommending a raise to any elected official.
Any, anyone else?
I'll throw in a comment, Megan called me as well, and, you know, for, for me and probably for all of us, the reality is, again, mostly for me, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation if Tracy wasn't doing such a good job and, and assuming all the responsibilities that she has. The 57 is on the high end of the spectrum for me, I, I wasn't comfortable with that, and, and, and I felt like somewhere just beneath that is, is really where I'm falling in line, and, and I've said that. I think there is a difference between being elected and, and being appointed. If you're appointed, who knows what responsibilities fall underneath that position? And, and I do appreciate the survey that, that you provided us, it was very helpful. I, I, I do see a difference between the police department, I, I don't know if we've seen anything lately on the police department, I'd kind of like to see some of those statistics, and I'm sure the chief can provide that, or Megan, you can, you can do that as well. But at the end of the day, for me, Tracy's done an outstanding job, and a raise for me is merited. So I'll support it. It probably won't be in that, it won't be in that $57,000 range, but it'll be close.
Okay. Well, and because I had had those discussions with all of you about where you felt you wanted this number to go, I have the ordinance that Mr. Penn is sponsoring for 57,000, and I also have a blank ordinance. So if the council feels ready to have the conversation that indicates where you want it to fall, whether you want to vote on the 57 to see what happens there first, and then if it does not pass, go to the blank ordinance and decide where you might want to put the number, we can still get the first reading in. And the only reason I say that is because we do have to have the salary set by the first Monday in May, and I would hate to see us dragged to the point that we didn't get to accomplish anything, because I think what I've heard, from what I've heard, everyone indicates there should be something happening.
Well, I want to say one more thing, and I may not have said this a moment ago, I can't remember if I said it or not, but if, if, probably I did. If Tracy wasn't doing the job that she was doing, we, I don't think we'd be here, I don't think we'd be talking about this, or having this conversation.
I think what we might be here trying to do would be hire another employee for another department, because she absorbed a lot of duties from some other departments, and duties that I think would be pretty difficult for the departments that are currently staffing to pick back up.
When, when, when you talk to all the council members, the price range that you got at 57, to where, you know, we, we discussed what I said, which was most up here or down here?
Um, let's see.
You know what I'm saying? Did you just take that?
Yeah, yeah, I had one council person say they'd like to see it between 50 and 55. One person said I wanted it 57, another at 48, two people said at 50, and one at 53. So if you average all that, I think it's somewhere around 52, 5, close to 53.
That was my question on how the council, the majority was looking at the, to balance it out.
Just, just for clarification purposes, and, and no offense, Ms. Hoffman, because I know this, if we do vote on this raise, it wouldn't take effect until January 1 of 2015, and no offense, so there's, when we're talking about giving her a raise, it's not necessarily giving Tracy a raise, it's giving the position a raise. So, not that that really matters, but I just think that the clarification, and no offense, but I think that needs to be clarified, because it's not, could be, and it might not be, so.
That's very true.
That's a good point, because just say if it did happen, and the other clerk come in, she didn't want to do this alcohol stuff, would she be made to do it? She's elected official, it's not under her job duties, would that raise still stand?
The raise would stand.
It would.
Megan, you can.
It would be sent.
You understand what I'm saying?
You can answer the question about the responsibilities, how, how would the responsibilities fall?
The responsibilities, from, from my understanding of this position, and I included the KRS for you that outlines the duties of the City Clerk, from what I understand, that's all he or she would have to do.
Yep.
Whatever's in statute or ordinance.
So we could establish an ordinance? And that's probably not a bad idea.
No, I don't think it's bad.
You know, but this council didn't make it an appointed position, we let, we decided as a council to make it, to leave it as an elected position, so, you know what, if they want to do what state law says, I'd say that's their choice. So, we're stuck with the decision this council made prior, so, you know, we continue, we've continued to add duties to that office, and yet that, that office is stip, you know, what that office has to do is stipulated by a state statute, and we've added to it. And, and then KLC says that other cities with City Clerks that are doing, you know, other duties based on, based on most of them being appointed, aren't we the last elected City Clerk position in the state? I don't see how that's not fair for us to, to consider that, so.
Mr. Hartley, I have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a question regarding your point. The added duties, well, let's start with the duties enshrined in the state law. If City Clerk refuses to do those duties that are specified in the statute, is it, can council then make a finding, I guess what would be called non-feasance in office?
Misfeasance, malfeasance.
And I suppose move for that clerk's removal, is that correct?
Absolutely.
If we pass ordinances specifying adding duties on, and we find that the clerk is not performing those duties specified by ordinance, can we make a finding of non-feasance, malfeasance?
Based on, because the ordinance says that the clerk's duties shall be as set by statute and ordinance, then I believe, yes, that will be part of their official duty.
So if we had another clerk, and the clerk refused to do, I will never, I will never vote for a finding of malfeasance related to the Dudley Avenue Parking Ordinance, but let's say they refuse to do the ABC ordinance, they refuse to do that, could we make a finding of malfeasance, non-feasance in that case? And remove them from office?
Is that because we've already established that by ordinance?
Yes. And I think, you know, I, I can't really find that much case law on it, but I think there is an argument to be made that it's council's duty to set the duties of the position prior to the election of the officer. Now, it doesn't specify in the statute, it just says, the clerk's duties shall be as established by statute and by ordinance. I think the idea is that a clerk is elected based on what they know their duties to be. So they might have a legitimate argument that, and I say might, that's a pretty strong might, they might have a legitimate argument that those duties were imposed post-election. I think it would be, you know, it'd be most beneficial to have the duties of the clerk set forth before the clerk is elected. That's just my take on it.
I think we're ready for.
Actually, I'll invite you up, so you can come on up, since we're talking about, about you possibly that position, or Ms. Hoffman possibly that position. Do you have the question I posed to you, since you're willing to come up here and put yourself on the line?
Is this inviting?
Can, can?
Let's make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing here.
I'll invite her, if, to the chair. May I invite her up to ask her a question?
What did Robert say?
Counsel?
Mayor, I have a problem, I'll have to be quite honest.
Well, I do too. I have a problem with someone coming up, we've already passed the.
Sort of an extra duty, but I guess a City Clerk is the parliamentarian. Sorry about the irate.
No.
I think this is a point of order rather than a procedural matter.
I would suggest we take a vote.
Okay. So do you want to take a vote on the $57,000 ordinance?
Oh, it is first ring?
No, sorry.
No.
You would be taking, you would be taking a straw vote to determine which ordinance you want read the first time.
For the first ring, yeah.
Yes.
Given the timeframe.
I would be happy to modify that if we could get some feedback. I guess, you know, David, you said you supported it, at what level?
I took, I'll tell you what I did, I took the numbers that Megan just threw out, and I came with 53,000.
I would modify to 53,000.
I would second that, if seconds needed.
Okay, so you want me to take the blank ordinance and fill it in with 53,000, and we'll have the first reading on that.
Do we have a consensus on that?
Okay.
Do we need a straw vote?
I think that's.
Okay.
Rather not with it.
Okay, I'll have the reading with those numbers the next time. Go ahead.
An ordinance establishing the pay rate for the City Clerk Treasurer, whereas pursuant to KRS 83A.070, subsection 1, the legislative body of each city shall by ordinance fix the compensation of every elected city officer not later than the first Monday in May in the year the officer is elected. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Georgetown. Section 1, effective January 1, 2015, the bi-weekly salary of the City Clerk Treasurer shall be 2,038, 46, 53,000 annual load, which salary shall be adjusted annually according to the consumer price index computation by the Department for Local Government pursuant to KRS 83A.075, with each adjustment retroactive to the first day of the calendar year thereafter. Section 2, any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. Publicly introduced and read for the first time, March 17, 2014.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mary. Chief, you're next on the agenda.
Sergeant Greg Gibson, graduated from a five-week management course down at DOCJT, and that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hayden's ready for us, before we get the council comments.
I have a proclamation I would like to read. Office of the Mayor, whereas Mark Hayden was a volunteer with the Georgetown Fire Department in January 1992, whereas Mark was hired full-time in February 1994, whereas in his 20-plus year career with the City of Georgetown Fire Department, Mark received specialized certification in the following: EMT, Hazardous Material Technician, Swift Water Rescue Technician, High Angle Rope Rescue Technician, and Confined high-angle rope rescue technician, and confined space rescue technician. Whereas Mark Hayden is greatly respected by his coworkers and community for his great work on behalf of the City of Georgetown and its citizens. Whereas Mark retired on February twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, which will allow him to spend more time with his wife Beverly and two stepdaughters, Jamie and Kimberly, and more time for hunting, fishing, and refereeing sports. Whereas the City of Georgetown is grateful to Mark for his faithful and exemplary service and wishes him well in retirement. Now therefore, I, Everett Barney, mayor of the City of Georgetown, hereby proclaim March the eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, as Mark Hayden Day in the City of Georgetown, Kentucky. So proclaimed this March seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, City of Georgetown, Kentucky. Mayor Everett Barney.
As you said, retirement, I apologize for being late this evening, because I was working. So, that's the reason I was late, but thanks to all of you, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your service, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Good luck.
Get your, well, everybody.
You're canned.
None left of camera there for all of us.
You better hold that, you better hold that the other way, counsel. This is us, this is the big day.
Mark, you need to smile real big now. There you go. Oh, that's what I pushed a button.
Stretch where you have to, gun.
He's new. Give him an iPhone.
Put out a fire.
Can't put out a fire, but can't use an iPhone.
Go get him, chief.
That's fun stuff. Okay, counsel, any comments you want to bring before us at this time?
I have one, mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
While we were talking about the ordinance for the city clerk's duties, I would like to see that happen before the next, you know, what we have written down or put that together and go ahead and put that in an ordinance, the extra duty.
Oh, yeah.
The extra duty.
Have everything ready for money.
Yeah. And if you need a sponsor, I'd be happy to sponsor that. Or Brad can.
Marvin?
Whatever you say.
That's what I like to hear.
I'd like to congratulate you on last Monday night for your eighth region Hall of Fame induction. And also, we want to keep Cardinals, they play Wednesday night. Big basketball this week.
Big basketball, and thank you, Marvin. It was a really, a nice ceremony, and I was surprised that I was the class of two, two thousand fourteen. I thought there would be others inducted, but I, to my surprise, I was the only one. And this Hall of Fame is, it's only ten years old, and I was totally unaware when I was chosen. Didn't even know, well, they didn't have one when I was coaching. So, I'm tremendously honored, I really am. And as I said, told Dan in the paper, anytime you're recognized by your peers, it makes it even more special. And cats on Friday night, too.
Yeah. Great draw, great draw.
Anything else?
Probably all winter.
All in favor, I? Both? Thanks, fellas and gals, appreciate it.
Like how Marvin said, maybe we'll never come back. What do you know, my friend?